Good evening and welcome to the October 7th meeting of the Concord Select Board. I want to remind everybody after welcoming them here that the meeting is being broadcast and recorded. So our first order of business is the consent agenda, consists of town accountants warrants, the endorsement of the Acton Town Manager to serve as a representative of the magic subregion in the Boston MPO, acknowledging gifts, Friends of Conquer Carlisle Fields, $50,000 for the Doug White Turf Fields, the Boston Foundation, $1,500 for the Thomas G. Curtin Bobby Cargula Nani Gift Account, and the Lindsay Foundation, $3,050 to the Hugh Cargill Trust Fund. We also have a proclamation for the Small Business Saturday, November 30th. And then we have a number of one-day special licenses. These are all at 40 Stowe Street and all for wine and malt only. And they are all for Emerson, the Umbrella Community Arts Center, November 11th from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m.
November 1st.
No, excuse me, thank you. November 1st, 2nd, and 2nd from 7:00 to 11:00. November 3rd from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. November 7th from 6:30 to 10:30. November 8th from 7:00 to 11:00. The 9th from 7:00 to 11:00. The 10th from 2:00 to 6:00. The 14th from 6:30 to 10:30. The 15th and 16th from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. The 17th from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. The 21st from 6:30 to 10:30 p.m. The 22nd and 23rd from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m.
Wow.
I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Aye, thank you.
I just have one question or comment about the Friends of Conquer Carlisle Fields. It looks like from this letter that it's for maintenance, and I just want to remind the Public Works Director and everybody that we're also hoping to have a similar donation toward the Emerson Renovation CPA project from the sports groups.
Okay. Mr. Town Manager.
Oh, yeah. I thought you were saying about donation.
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm ready for your report.
I'll make you know.
He goes really fast. It took me a while.
Yeah. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I did submit a brief written report for your reading. Couple of things, we did get our Complete Streets prioritization plan approved, and that led to a grant application being submitted by CPW, which happens, they were due on October 5th, on October 1st. I have the prioritization, so three applications have now been submitted, which include pedestrian, ADA, and traffic calming improvements to Hubbard Street, improvements to a section of Commonwealth Avenue between Baharal Street and Bradford Street, which includes curb ramps, curb extension sidewalks, and traffic calming, and improvements to the intersection of Sudbay Road, Seven Star Lane, and Oxbow Lane, to include curb ramps, advanced warning signs, and rectangular rapid flashing beacons. If you're watching at home and wonder why those, there's a pretty lengthy prioritization process that includes a lot of public input, and we had an engineering consultant that helped us kind of sift through all of that and look at data points and current ADA compliance and things like that. So there's a lot of objective factors that go into that prioritization plan. So, and there was a transportation forum on Friday that Rich Rain did present these priorities to, so, and I know that's online if people want to see more details of it. Then there's a quick note that the Board of Health is looking at enhancing the existing tobacco regulation, something that they're working on pretty actively. I don't have a timeline for when that's going to happen, but it really is in large, it's in large part in response to the vaping epidemic, which I think is really, you know, overtaking, you know, people, overtaking us as a society, and how quickly that really has gone from being kind of a fad to, like you said, a health epidemic. So they're definitely, the Board of Health definitely wants to be responsive with that. And then, really, if you're going to look at those types of products, then all tobacco products, you know, should be considered, and how they are available in Concord. So stay tuned for more from the Board of Health on that. And then I do, we, when we had the CPA prioritization discussion, there were a couple of projects that were not submitted by the town, that were submitted by private organizations that related to facilities that are of a religious nature, and given the Acton case, we wanted to have Town Council kind of look at those on behalf of the Community Preservation Committee, and their opinion is attached to your review. And I think that's about it for me. Any questions?
No, I'd just say that the, as everybody probably knows, the governor put a four-month ban on all vaping products in the Commonwealth, so, you know, I think that your point of stay tuned is wise.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Town Manager? Right, next item is remarks I have. I have a few remarks this evening. First, I want to provide an update on the legal matter regarding the Estenbrook Road. Not an update on the factual matters of the case, but an update of process-wise for everyone. The town has spent about a little over $700,000 so far on this matter. The early parts of the proceedings were taken up with various motions and two mediation hearings, and since then, the parties have participated in a very lengthy discovery process. The discovery process is scheduled to end November 1st, but the landowners have requested an extension of time until February 1st, 2020. I don't know whether that will be granted or not, but I would suspect it would be. After the discovery process ends, it would be reasonable to expect motions to be made to the court. The deliberations of the likely motions will probably be complete several months after the end of the discovery, late spring or early summer 2020, if that extension that I mentioned is granted. When the adjudications of motions is complete, the legal processes may end, or they may continue to trial. If the proceedings continue to trial, it is likely that the trial will not begin until next fall. In line with these timelines, we had asked Council to provide us with an estimate of legal expenses, and they did that, and at the current time, we, our legal expenses are within the currently approved town budget. So I wanted to make that update for folks. The second thing I want to bring to the board's attention and the audience's, and it's perfectly appropriate this evening, we had
Yeah.
14 one-day special licenses just from the Umbrella, and if you follow Select Board meetings, you'll know that we have numbers of these, often from Salt Box Farm, often from Verrill Farm, from 51 Walden Street, there's a number of organizations in town that regularly have events for which the liquors are wine and malt beverages. It turns out you can petition the General Court to grant you special licenses in excess of those that are allocated by the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission. And so I'll pass out to you, and I would like this on an agenda for a subsequent, a subsequent Select Board meeting. This is a proposed Home Rule petition that would ask the Commonwealth to grant us these special licenses, and I will be contacting at least the organizations that I know of that might be likely candidates for this to see if they're interested. It turns out it's quite common. The city of Boston has like 185 of them, and any number of cities have them, so I think this would be helpful to organizations like the Umbrella and helpful to town administration because of all of this paperwork. So anyway, on our agenda for our next board meeting, we could discuss this, and if it's something the board is interested in pursuing, that we, I sent this draft, which I've given to you, and we'll post this as part of the meeting material tomorrow. I've sent this off to Council for him to make sure there's nothing weird in it.
Sounds like a good idea.
I think, I think so. It'll save, I think, a lot of hassle.
Well, it's, it's, there's a lot of staff time involved preparing the packages for one-day liquor licenses, and I think, I think you're right, it's, it's not really a broad expansion of bars and, you know, the package stores, it's really for special events, the things that we're doing, and I think the community supports the events because there's 11 of, 14 of these, I think.
For liquor to be drawn on premises, so it's not for sale to take out, and it's also, what makes it special, it's a non-transferable license, so if one of these organizations would go out of business or cease to exist, the license just lapses and doesn't carry over, as opposed to a restaurant, which, you know, the license can carry over.
So the licenses would not come to the town, it would be for the specifics?
They'd come, they would authorize essentially, the Select Board authorized these licenses. But I think, I believe, and that's what Council is looking at, you have to specify in the Home Rule petition
Which one?
Which organization might want to do that.
Okay.
So, anyway.
I think this is really typical, that half our packet.
Yeah, half our packet. So I assume in the process of these licenses being granted, they do the due diligence about who's, you know, tips, sort of, and all that.
You have to go through a license process, just like you would to get a license. It's a little abbreviated, but it's the whole thing, which is something they have to go through every time they do.
Yes.
Anyway, so I hope that will be something that we will be able to.
Can we also include in that conversation, next discussion, the fees and how they would compare to the existing system versus?
Yes, because I don't know what they are.
Yeah.
So I'll have to find that out. A third, another, just a heads up again, for our next meeting, we will review the APP-10, which you'll remember, I mentioned at our last meeting, is the administrative policies and procedure that governs who can serve on town committees. And there's nothing wrong with it, except it's just, it uses words like "should," and it isn't quite as tight as I think we might like it in terms of what exceptions we would want to make, and it's relevant now particularly for our Economic Vitality Committee, so let's just do it and get it done.
Mm-hmm.
And another item, which I'm not sure, yes.
On that, if, I would just ask if board members have specific views on things, maybe get them into us, into Jeremy, in advance, so they can be distributed for consideration.
Yeah, what I thought, along that line, is I have a copy of it. I was going to take a crack at getting some language in there that I thought would tighten it up, and then get it to you guys, you guys do the same, and then send it off to the board so they'll see it, and then we can discuss it and hopefully come to a conclusion.
Are you looking for certain committees that you think, no, you're just looking for the language in APP-10?
Just want to be clear about
Good.
Is "should" the kind of word we should use?
Okay.
As opposed to "must" or whatever. And then if we're going to have "should" language in there, we should be clear on how we decide whether there's an exception.
Okay.
Where it applies, yeah.
That's it, yeah. And then last, for another future agenda item, to take us back to previous ones, when we were dealing with the envisioned Concord long-range plan, you'll know we sort of divided up a bunch of tasks to deal with, economic vitality, affordable housing, and the like, and Jane had transportation.
Yep.
And I want to get that back on the agenda as soon as we can, and I know you've been working on it.
Right.
So maybe there's a quick update you could give us now, but.
Well, and as I think the Town Manager related, and I know Terry was there, and I don't know whether others, Susan, there was a, the League of Women Voters did a transportation meeting discussion this past week, and, and it was very useful. Not only did Rich Rain make his presentation, but we also had folks from the state, and we heard a significant amount about the Crosstown Connect Phase 1, where that will be coming into town. And it really teed up the fact that transportation is a bit of an orphan, I mean, it affects many different committees, it affects all of Concord, and yet, it's not clear that we can, we haven't taken a look at what, what are the micro things we can do in Concord itself? What are the macro things that are really about the state or perhaps regional opportunities? How do we sort them? And then in our list of priorities, we need to take a good reflective look about Concord itself, because not every, I love to bike, we're not going to put bike lanes on a lot of the historic roads that have stone walls and mature trees, the roads are narrow. And so we just, we need to have that moment of prioritization and discussion, and I know that we're very lucky in our Town Manager with, that you have a fairly extensive transportation background. And just as we did with, I'm thinking back on affordable housing, you know, it was a big issue with a lot of passion involved.
Mm-hmm.
And we didn't know how we were going to take a stab at it, nor did we know how we were going to fund any of the work that we might identify, and we wrestled this. So I think we're going to start that, that process now, and it may make sense to have a, to follow the processes that we've already put into place for our other two, our Economic Vitality and the capital planning, looking at a small group of folks to really take a stab at Concord's piece of this. Sometimes it's easy to blur the line between transportation and traffic.
Hmm.
They both begin with T.
[laughing]
You know, and traffic is that piece of transportation that affects most of us, but they are, you know, one is a subset of the other. And transportation, we may not, you know, we may have some levers into, traffic, traffic is a moment that we're, you know, we're a part of that, we're not, we're not the solution to all of it.
She had the presenter from the MAPC had a slide that said, "You're not stuck in traffic, you are traffic."
You are traffic, exactly.
And if, so if I may.
Oh, please do, yes.
Just about, so I, early in my career, I actually lobbied in, on Capitol Hill for federal service transportation. T-21 was the name of the bill, is Reauthorization of Ice Tea, which was really the kind of seminal federal transportation policy, back before they did authorization, back when they did authorization bills, instead of doing everything in giant omnibus appropriations bills. And so, and then in virtually every spot I've had, transportation and transportation planning has been a big part of my role. In fact, when they showed, when Rich showed the slide of the Complete Streets towns in 2016 to show how few there were, and then showed the growth of it now, I was going to jump up and point out Long Meadow being one of the ones with the bylaw, in fact, not just a prioritization, the town adopted a Complete Streets bylaw. And so obviously, that was something that we were, that I've been on the front end of. I think traffic is a behavioral problem. Transportation is a systems issue, and I think that's the big thing. Now, can you work on the system to improve traffic? To a point, and I think that, even you looked at the panel, what was really striking for me was, you had CPW and Rich Rain, which is kind of literally where the rubber hits the road.
Yeah.
You had Lieutenant Monahan, who talked about the rules of bicycling and pedestrians, but also talked about how, about how that related to actual bike, impede, and motorist behavior and how they interface, and how, so you had that component of it as well, and there were a lot of things he said that were, I think people thought were a rule, and it turns out they weren't a rule, or the rule was different than people thought it was. Like you can ride your bike on Route 2, which Lieutenant Monahan said, "Is it smart, but it is legal?"
I understand.
Yeah. So then, and then you had the gentleman from Crosstown Connect, which is really a, I call it a micro level, but I mean, compared to the broader transportation, we are a part of a transportation system that is across the continent of the United States. You had a, the Crosstown Connect is a micro level, kind of sub-regional level effort to improve mobility and maybe to diminish the need for single-car trips. And that's something that I plan on doing some outreach to the folks who run that, to find out how can Concord be at that table for that and other, and other regional efforts. I've gotten a sense of some of that stuff, but that panel was good. So you have, like you said, the sub-regional level, and then you had MAPC to talk about the broader regional level, and all the things that are happening there, and really looking up at how vast the problem is, and the other comment I made, and I'll leave it, this is, to keep things in perspective for the board, there's an inverse relationship between, at the local level, between the problems and the resources. Whereas most of the problems we feel in tra, in transportation, whether it's traffic or limitations on mobility, whether it's for bikes, peds, or for those with disabilities, the problems are really pronounced at the local level, you feel them here. But the meaningful resources to really deal with the system are at the federal level, and so I think it's really kind of, how can we close that gap in a thoughtful way? And I completely agree that it's something that should be on the agenda for the board.
Well, let's get it on the agenda and deal with it. I just want to make sure when we, when we deal with this topic, as we referenced when we dealt with economic vitality, it has a lot of dimensionality, much more broad, it has specific things in Concord that are of concern to us, and that is the movement of tourists around the town that connects to the economic vitality issue. And it also has to do with people, how people who work in Concord, who have to get into Concord and out of Concord with.
Or across Concord, right.
Or across Concord, for that matter, and a lot of the businesses have spoken directly about the problem of getting people in town here. So there's the transportation writ large and traffic writ small, and then there's the very Concord-focused kind of stuff that I'm not sure we'll be able to sweep up in that and deal with. So thanks, Jane, and.
I just wanted to add one thing. I know that that meeting was, that forum was taped, recorded on, and so you can, if you didn't. Anybody missed it?
Go look at it.
It was, it was a great forum.
It was really good.
Great.
Hats off to the league, that was good.
Yeah, really excellent.
Nice job in there, and Alice Kaufman did a masterful job.
Yeah, she is, definitely.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, thank you all. Our next item is a review of the Junction Village project and home requests. So Liz, Russ, and Walter Rohanian are going to join us. Nice to see you both.
Thank you for having us.
Record.
Hi, I'm Liz Russ, I'm the Director of the Regional Housing Services Office and Resident at 201 Commonwealth Avenue.
And Walter Rohanian, Managing Director for the Grantham Group, developer and management agent for the proposed assisted living at Junction Village, 488 Elm Street.
Thank you very much for coming.
That's your home, right?
So just the background, is it a number of years ago that we?
Not too long ago. I'm just thinking about a long.
We, the town participated in providing potential funding for a project at the time called Junction Village, and that consisted of a CPC grant over a period of three years and a free cash grant for a total of $2 million. And so this for us is an update on where we stand, so thank you very much.
Sure, sure. So I'll start, I think in your packet, I have, there's a few pieces of material, and there's an overall status report, I think it says Junction Village, status, October 2019, and I'll go through that. That provides an update on all elements of the project, and then we can dive into specific questions after that. As Mike said, the property really kicked off in 2013 with the Department of Corrections deeding the about 13-acre property to the Concord Housing Development Corporation for the purposes of open space and affordable housing. The project has a residential development component known as Christopher Heights of Concord that Walter will speak about, and that's about six acres of the property, and open space would be designed for the rest. And I think there's a little site map in the package. The residential plan is to construct 83 units of affordable housing for seniors 62-plus for assisted living, so there'll be services provided, and that's over three tiers of affordability. There are some extremely low-income units, some very low, and some moderate income limits. And so that's 83 altogether. As Mike said, the project has strong local support with $2 million already appropriated over the last three years, and these local funds will be contributed to the project with no more than 50% at closing, so that most of the money, or half the money, would go in at certificate of occupancy. That's been documented through a memorandum of understanding that's available on the website that spells that out between the town and Grantham and the CHDC. The development received a comprehensive permit, that's a 40B permit, which was required for zoning purposes back in May of 2017, and at that point, the 83 units were added to the subsidized housing inventory, which is called the SHI, that's the counting that DHCD has towards that 10%. And in accordance with that policy, the units then lapsed off, so you can put them on with the permit, and then if you don't have the building permit, they lapse off, that's the terminology there. And they'll be re-added when the building permits are issued. While unlikely, I want to mention that Concord may dip below the 10% SHI in 2021 when DHCD, that's the Department of Housing and Community Development, adjusts the denominator. As it's 10%, there's a numerator and a denominator. The numerator would be the building permits for Grantham, and the denominator is the new census. Both are right around that period of time, so all indications are that Grantham would receive its building permits prior to the denominator getting updated, but both are variables where we don't have exact target dates right now.
But it would be a short time.
Very short, and that would be similar to the Muse. Concord was above 10% before the Muse, then the 2010 census hit, and there was a little dip till those building permits came back on. And during that dip period, there was no, you know, unfriendly 40B project coming in. It would be a Raisin developer, I'd say, who would sneak in in some period of time, and they would probably meet with some, you know, opinions.
I'm sure there's nobody out there like that.
Yeah, you know, I mean, local support is always important to get projects done. It's always a partnership, no matter whether you call it a friendly 40B or unfriendly, and so, you know. From a funding perspective, aside from the already appropriated local funds, the town has agreed to support additional local home funds from the home program. The home program is federal funds that funnel through the West Newton Home Consortium, which is a group of 13 communities administered out of Newton, Concord's a member there, and Concord's been successful at using those funds towards some capital improvements for the housing authority, as well as funding the four additional units at Peter Bulkley most recently, and now here Junction Village. Junction Village has always been earmarked to get those funds. There are two buckets of funds, there's the funds that Concord has exclusive use for. Concord gets funds every year to, you know, for their own purpose, and you can usually save up about two years of those, and so those sit at a balance of $42,555. We call those the exclusive use. And for every community in the consortium, if you haven't used your funds in the exclusive use, they sweep into this competitive pool where you can, where they issue an RFP and you can request against those. That pool is now at $421,000. It's an annual amount, and no other project in the consortium is interested in those funds, so the Junction Village project is, I know, is applying for those, and I think is the only project applying. The deadline's coming up in two weeks, but it's a very cooperative, regional collaboration, so people talk and make sure that all projects can be supported. You need to, there's a lot of restrictions to using the home funds, and in order to apply, you have to have all your other funding set up, and the home funds are always used as gap funding, so you have to have your other funding sources available. And it's always, the competitive pool funds are always awarded to projects that have other sources, especially state funds or low-income housing tax credit, or projects such as this that, as you know, take many, many years to get to this point, so. So once awarded, the home funding commitment process requires an environmental review and further Select Board, so this isn't the last time that you'll hear about that, but you'll be asked to vote support for that RFP today, but the project will come back for authorization to sign the appropriate documents. And then we talk about state funding, which is an annual process that awards every summer. So you apply in November, the state then asks you to, that's a pre-application process, and then they pick out projects, they invite them to apply to the formal process in February for awards in July, and we'll talk talk a little bit more about that. But the Grantham has applied through that process twice and has not been yet successful, and all indications are that this next year coming up, it will be successful. DHCD has asked to finalize a few details in advance of that process coming up, which is the funding commitment for the home funds is one piece. The confirmation for the amount of the property taxes, and we can talk a little bit about that, and then the finalization of the ground lease with this Concord Housing Development Corporation. Concord Housing Development Corporation will continue to own the land, and the arrangement will be a ground lease with Grantham. Once the funding is awarded, the closing process would take maybe nine months, resulting in a building permit potentially in the spring of 2021 with occupancy 2022. And that closing process brings a regulatory framework with like this many documents, restrictions and loan agreements, and lots of documents, and require town support and legal assistance. And it's at this time that the local preference would be confirmed. So, we always talked about that that would come there. I spoke with Mina just briefly to get a flavor for the amount of legal assistance, and he thought it would be under $10,000. But it's, so it's not zero, but it's not a larger amount. The non-reservation, this, we'll talk a little bit about the open space area. The non-residential portion of the property would be used for passive recreation, as defined by the Junction Village Open Space Task Force, whose members are appointed by the Select Board. And I think that the idea was to wait until the funding was more in sights before getting those people together. It would be ideal for the group to be constituted this coming winter, I think, 2020, and then they could start to address the needs. There's some baseline work that needs to be done, baseline conditions, and some technical work. There's some previously appropriated CPA funds to support that work, including engineering and, you know, other pieces, survey delineation, emergency access easement on the Department of Corrections property and what have you, as well as to work through the conservation restriction, which will protect that portion of the land. And then, just the general design of the open space. I don't want to indicate that it's all technical, you know, survey kind of work, but the path design and benches and what have you. So, I provided here a timetable. I think I've spoken to that, really looking at the funding coming up this summer, and then following with the spring of 2021 with the closing of the town funds and issuing the building permit, and then moving to occupancy. So, that's just a very high-level update of the whole project, all elements, and I think with this sort of stuff, questions? Or do you want to, do you want to talk about anything in specific?
Yeah, I'm more than happy to go into a little bit more detail on the project. Obviously, you know quite a bit about it already, which is great. Thank you, Liz. Really, the project for me, from the financing aspect, really got going in May of 17, and that's when we were able to get the comprehensive permit. And that really started the ball with me applying to DHCD to be awarded the funds necessary to make this project go. Just to kind of recap, there is approximately $5 million from a tax credit investor that gets awarded by DHCD, and a little over $3 million of all the sorts of soft debt that comes in from DHCD as well. So, a significant amount of money that they put in. And what happens is, when we applied in the first go-around, there's basically, for every dollar of tax credit that's out there, there's $10 that's chasing it. It's an extremely competitive process. It's not uncommon for projects to go in two, three, or even four times. All of the projects that Grantham has put in has been approved. This would actually be our seventh assisted living project that would go in. The six previous ones have all been approved, and we've also put in for a senior housing project, which got approved as well. So, I know DHCD, from their governance citation that we were issued, actually in October of 17, they look at us as a highly desirable developer because we're unique in the type of project that we develop. So, when we applied after we got the comprehensive permit, not surprisingly enough, we did not get approved. We were hoping that we would get approved in the second round. One of the things that we did to make our project even stronger was the fact that we had received a financial commitment, not just a term sheet, but a financial commitment from a local bank. And that really showed that we had all of the resources we felt were necessary to get the project going. After we didn't get approved this round, DHCD did come back to me and said there were a couple of things they wanted to make sure that they understood in the project, one of which was getting the commitment of the home funds. And they thought that was important because they want to be the last money in. They want to make sure on their end that they actually have a project that is going to move. They don't want to issue these credits to a developer that still has another two years of commitments that they're looking for. So, with the commitment that I have from a local bank, as well as hopefully that we'll get the commitment from the local home funds, it's enough to really put the project over and get an approval for the coming round. The way it works is this way, is there's a pre-application that will most likely, it hasn't been announced yet, but will most likely happen sometime in November. And what they do at the pre-app is they take a look at all of the applicants that have a desire for credits, and they weed probably 40 to 50% of them out because they're not projects that are considered ready to move forward. And then, they'll look at about 50 projects that will apply for full applications. So, we know we'll get past that point because obviously, we have proven from the previous two applications that we can move forward. So, then what will happen is, most likely in February, a full application will be due, and so, we're going to want to make sure that we have all those other i's dotted and t's crossed for this application process. And then, hopefully, we'd find out early next summer whether or not we have an award. And then, if we do, we have to work through the comprehensive permit here that we have in town to make sure that all of the items that were asked of us before building permits taken, that those items are done, and that will probably take a few months anyways to get that accomplished. So, just like the timeframe that Liz had pointed out, we very much anticipate being able to adhere to it. The good news is, is it wasn't just a general conversation that I had with DHCD, it was more of a one-on-one conversation that I had. They do like the project, they do like assisted living and the services that it offers to low-income frail seniors, and they'd like to see a project like this move forward. They realize it's a big project with a huge commitment from the town, and they don't take that lightly. They want to make sure they can make a call and let, you know, there's an approval. But unfortunately, when there's a lot of applications in, they can't do that every applicant for every round. So, that's kind of where we are today.
Well, Liz, I want to, for Liz, I want to thank you, in addition to your remarks, for preparing such a comprehensive report. That was very helpful. And Walter, thanks for being here and sharing your views. Questions from the committee?
So, I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this over a long period of time, so congratulations on at least getting to this point.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions, and one has to do with the home funds. So, I didn't, initially, I think we were anticipating that that amount might be different than what it is right now, and that, I assume, has to do with the money that's available in the pool. And I guess I'm the beneficiary of that. Walter, from your comment, sounds like it's DHCD.
Yes and no. So, projects is, it's not speaking out of term, but I think everyone realizes the rise of construction costs continue to go through the roof. Any gap funding that's necessary, we look to be able to fill, so projects, when they are approved, have everything in place that's necessary. We were fortunate enough that the local home funds had some money that can absorb some of those increasing costs in construction, but besides that, we also have to look at the labor market. If we remember when we actually started looking at this project, is we didn't know where minimum wage was going. Now, we have a set regulation that's been put in place by the governor. We also have a Paid Family Medical Leave Act, and all those things are items that operators have to take on. So, those are things that I have to consider in the operation of the budget. And being able to make sure that I can keep a mortgage that we know that we can pay, because remember, this place is still going to take on a full mortgage of over $8 million. We need to make sure we have enough resources to be able to do so. So, keeping the construction costs in line and making sure we have enough funds to be able to pay that is helpful. So, we are fortunate enough that the local home funds was increased to be able to absorb some of that.
So, the one-stop financial pro forma has stayed, has stayed the same in terms of each of the application periods?
No, it has, it's probably going to have another adjustment as well by the time between now and when we apply, because we'll get closer to having firmer construction numbers as we get closer to the date that happens. You know, it's, I don't want to say a moving target, but in some ways it is when it comes to construction costs. I feel like we have a good idea of where the operations is going to be now because we have some clear cut of where minimum wage is going to be, and also where the added benefit of the Family Medical Leave Act is going to take us. And so, those things, we can, we have been able to work into our pro forma, but now we just need to be able to make sure that we keep construction costs in line.
So, I distributed the pro forma that's in the home funds. The home fund package is hundreds of pages, so I apologize for not pulling out this particular piece. And you can see in the bottom, it's dated September 25th, so that this is current for the RFP. And as Walter says, at each of the application milestones, it gets updated with best information at the time. And prior to closing, it's a much more concrete, again, DHCD won't close and put their money in until they're sure that the project can move forward. Not only the other funding sources are there, but the estimates in the budget represent really reality, but, so that that kind of moves closer and closer as the funds come in.
And then, the additional information that DHC has asked for has to do with the ground lease and taxes. Can you just comment on that a little bit in terms of how they?
Sure. So, we have a development agreement right now that's in place with the Concord Housing Development Corporation, and the, basically, they're looking for us to outline the ground lease itself. It's a one-large parcel of land that we know a subsection of that is going to be utilized by the assisted living, and some of it will be utilized for passive rec space. So, they just want that clearly labeled into the, into the ground lease itself and have a document that holds us to that. So, typically, the ground lease is going to be for about 80 years. It's going to have some conditions associated with it, and it's going to be the affordability restriction, as we know, that's going to go along with it, that 43 units will be 60% below the area median income, and the remaining 40 units will be 150% below the area median income. And that's going to go for the term of the ground lease. In addition to that, they also wanted to make sure on the taxes, that we have an idea that we don't have a unexpected tax consequence that the project can't handle, and we find that out before closing. So, they'd like to know, you know, where your taxes are going to be. So, I actually submitted information that you received in our, in my budget. I also submitted that to the tax assessor last week. So, he's looking at it as well.
I'm going to kick off meeting with Lane and Walter's team and Marcia and the CHDC to go through how to best assess the property.
Great. So, thank you very much. So, those two light items may be subject to some change for your third application.
Well, we don't have a ground lease yet in place, so they'll definitely, we hope to be able to formulate one between now and then. We've submitted a draft over to CHDC, which they're working on and reviewing. And then, with the real estate taxes, I'm going to be, like I said, I submitted the information to Lane just last week. I'm assuming at some point, he'll get back to me, and we'll discuss it and make sure what he has and what he's coming up with is something that I had already budgeted, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, and that's the reference I'm making, is what you had already budgeted.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, but I really also want to thank you guys because this status report was fantastic. I really, it's like a great executive summary of the whole thing, and this pro forma is really good, too. So, my question is, on this page that says sources of funds?
Sure.
Okay. So, I see the home funds and CPA funds and the private bank loan, but there's a few of the other ones that I didn't know what they were, like where it says sales revenue, it says C budget.
Yep. So, basically, that's the anticipated revenue that we'll have from the income that we'll have from the project. So, besides a sources and uses for construction, there's also an operational budget. So, the operational budget as well is in there. Not in your reduced packet, but there is a full operating budget as well, as part of the application.
Okay. Is that a really long document that's like 100 pages long?
Yes, it is.
Is there a, like a summary of it that we could get? Is there like a overall summary of it?
I could submit to you just the operating budget, if that's what you're looking for, but there is a full application. It's about 200 some odd pages.
Yeah, the operational budget.
Okay, sure. Not a problem at all. I can submit that.
And then, where it says home?
Correct.
What is that?
So, there's federal home funds as well as the state home fund, so this is the federal.
All right. So, we already have, we have received that.
So, the home funds of the 825, these are the state home funds, and it's state and local. I think, I think that's what you mean. The 463 555 are the local home funds that you're going to vote tonight.
Right.
And the home that's there are state home funds. They all come from HUD, but they just get distributed through different, and those come from the state.
And we've already secured.
They're issued by, no, so they're issued by DHCD. That's part of the award process.
That comes with their whole low-income housing tax credit, housing stabilization fund, affordable housing trust fund, and the low-income housing tax credit. So, those all come in as one award.
Ah.
Each with their own restriction and mortgage and note and all of that, but they all get awarded together.
Is that what you refer to as the soft debt, or is that?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Well, again, thank you very much, and I would entertain a motion.
I move to support the Grantham Group application to the West Metro Home Consortium and authorize the town manager to send a letter of support.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you both very much for coming, and you'll be back. Whoops, there's a second motion. Right, that's right. Sorry.
I support the FY '20 home sub-recipient agreement and authorize the town manager to sign the required agreements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll be back to us sometime for our final vote.
Yes, for the home funds, yeah, it's probably going to be November, January, somewhere in there, when the home funding agreement will be back at finalization.
And then, February is the application.
February is the application.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Again, thanks so much for that. Next update from the Director of Finance on 2019 refunding bonds. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here this evening to present the results of last week's bond sale on $6.1 million worth of refunding bonds related to a portion of the Willard School construction project. We received nine bids. The bids were ranked on the lowest true interest cost, and the winning bid was from Morgan Stanley. The original bid provided a true interest cost of 1.268826%. Again, nine bids, and there was only a difference of about 11 basis points. This was about 12 basis points better than the bond issue that we did in June, which was of about the same size, so the market is still very favorable. The original premium was $1,031,820. We were able to use that premium to resize the issue from $6.1 million to $5,170,000. The term of the new issue is nine years, which is the same as the bonds that were called. We use a portion of the premium to pay all of our expenses, and the present value savings of the resized premium, less the expenses, is $632,000, or 10.37%. I mentioned to you previously, anything over 3% is worth doing or worth looking at. Anything over 4% is worth doing, so this is, this is very significant. I haven't seen anything like this in my very long tenure working in municipal government. This will save about $90 on the average tax bill over the term. These bonds received the AAA rating from Moody's, as we've had for a number of years. And so, as is the process, we accept the low bid on behalf of the board and then present it to you. So, that's what's before you this evening. There is a lengthy form of vote that needs to be read in its entirety.
Well, congratulations.
Absolutely.
On behalf of the town, that's just excellent.
Thank you.
I would greatly appreciate it.
Better than excellent.
It's a savings to all.
All right, better than excellent.
I just think about how much less favorable it would have been had I not been here. But I do, I do want to commend Karen in the Finance Department, but also the Finance Committee as well for their work on this and pushing this forward.
Right. I greatly appreciate everybody's attention to this, and it makes a big difference, so we're grateful. So, unless there are questions from the board, Linda, I think you- So unless there are questions from the board, Linda, I think you've got to be the motion reader.
All right. And the motion reads that in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, to refund a portion of the town's $15,100,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2010 bonds dated January 15th, 2010, maturing on January 15th in the years 2021 through 2029, inclusive collectively the refunded bonds, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium and interest on the refunded bonds and cost of issuance of the refunded bonds.
For a second.
Second.
A discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Linda?
A motion that reads that the sale of the $5,170,000 general obligation school refunding bonds of the town dated October 17th, 2019, the bonds, to Morgan Stanley and Company, LLC, at the price of $6,155,394.17, and accrued interest is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on January 15th of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows.
Yes.
Year 2021, the amount of $500,000, interest rate of 5%. Year 2026, the amount of $585,000, interest rate of 5%. 2022, year 2022, the amount of $565,000, interest rate of 5%. In the year 2027, the amount will be $590,000 for an interest rate of 5%. I'm sorry, I'm reading.
It's all right. As long as you're reading them.
Sorry. 2023, in the year 2023, amount of $575,000 for the interest rate of 5%. In the year 2024, the amount of $580,000 for the interest rate of 5%. In the year 2025, 500, in the amount of $585,000 for the interest rate of 5%. I'm going to skip to the year 2028 in, in the amount of $595,000 for 5%. And the year 2029, in the amount of $595,000 for 5%.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Linda, if you need it to be spelled, let us know.
I will. A motion that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated September 25th, 2019, and a final official statement dated October 1, 2019, each in such form as they may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. A further motion to authorize the execution and delivery of a refunding escrow agreement to be dated October 17th, 2019, between the town and the U.S. Bank National Association as refunding escrow agent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A further motion that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12, in such form as they may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Further motion that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deemed sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant security laws.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And perhaps our last motion on this topic, that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Linda.
Good job, Linda.
Nice job. All right. The next item is presentation by the finance committee on a warrant article to establish a debt stabilization fund. Mr. Banfield.
Good evening. Good evening. Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace, Chair of the Finance Committee. I, I don't know if you have the letter that I sent to the chair in your packets. If you do not, we can get copies of this made.
I don't think we have that. I don't think we have.
I don't think it was in the packet.
It wasn't in the packet.
It's two sided, Carrie. We are, you know, we are discussing the activities of the middle school building committee, of which you have a member sitting here at the table, so he has better information and status than, than I'll be able to deliver you regarding the status of that project. However, from the financial perspective, the discussion of that project involves a building which will be anticipated to be between $80 million and $100 million to construct. The school is hoped to be open in the 22, 23 school year. The stretch goal would be at the beginning of the school year with the, you know, the probable goal being in the middle of the year, similar to the way the CCHS building opened mid-year, possibly the April vacation. It just depends on what the bids look like, et cetera. That's been listed on the general register. It was listed on, on September 25th. And so we are, you know, we're facing down the financial reality that without MSBA help, the town will be on the hook for between $80 and $100 million school building project. With that in mind, Carrie has, has done some amount of preliminary estimating and has expected that this would cause, at the peak of the, even though we have some debt service reductions that are going on as, as debt is being retired from the three elementary buildings and the new high school is, is starting to get on the downtrend, the extra capacity we have will be overwhelmed by the taking on of all that debt. The expectation is that the debt service cost will cause taxes to rise by about 10% without some action on, on the town's part. That's a pretty good hit on anybody on any given year. That's, that's our expectation. There have been a few different estimates. The school board has estimated maybe 8%, but it's still a big number, to be real. If we turn this over, this is a, this is just a letter that I sent to the chair requesting that, and the finance committee is very, trying to be proactive in its, in its job of advising town meeting, advising that we get a warrant article to open and create a stabilization fund and put aside funds, magnitude indeterminate at this point, but to get it open at least this year with some seed money in it, to help us mitigate the tax peaks that will occur as we issue the bonds and begin to pay them down. If you turn the page over and look at the schedule that occurred for the high school, for reference, the high school opened in April of 2015. That would be listed in the, in, in this chart, that would be in FY 16. So their, their fiscal 16 would be the year in which this opened. They began to place funds in fiscal 13, so three years ahead of the opening of that school, $2 million was deposited and, and then 750, 750, and 750. And as construction bonds were issued, there were drawdowns that were also being taken and then the drawdowns continued beyond any further deposits. This school building was built with MSBA funding and their first dollars go in to construct the building. They don't, they don't underwrite bonds. They actually just help you pay to get the building built. So our anticipated need for bond, for bond funding was deferred while their initial funding was going in to build the building. If that doesn't happen for us, we're going to be on the hook immediately to start issuing debt and then paying for it. So it is the recommendation of the finance committee that, that we get a warrant article on the agenda this year to, to open a stabilization fund and put some amount of money in it. Now, in our discussions with the finance director, we believe, although we don't have a certified balance for our free cash yet, we believe that our free cash balance will be somewhere around a, over 10%. Is that my misquoting? It'll be over 10%.
So 11 million.
Somewhere around 11 million. Yeah. Now, we have had articles coming along in the last few years in which, you know, project-oriented drawdowns from free cash have been voted. We voted for affordable housing last year, a $500,000 drawdown against free cash. It's possible that such an article will also be on the warrant this year. We think this is a very high priority, that we just draw down some money, put it aside because we need to plan. And, and that's my story and I'm sticking with it.
Well, I've been, I've been at your meeting when you discuss this at least a couple, a couple of times. It's, I think something the town has done in the past. And the timing, as you, as you have explained, without MSBA funding, makes it a little more urgent that we get with this if we're going to do it.
Right.
So I don't know how to proceed in the sense of, I would be more than happy for the select board to sponsor a warrant article to do this. I assume the finance committee would be more than happy to do it as well.
We, we would be. I, I, you know, just, I wrote to the select board just because I felt as though it would be the town, the town's project and the town's desire to do it, but the finance committee would be happy to try to construct such an article and.
Well, it's a matter, no, there's two parts to it. Who's going to actually write the little rascal?
Right.
And then whose article is it going to?
Right.
Is it going to be? I don't, we can all help get the article drafted with Mr. LaFleur probably taking the lead some 20 years. Thanks for volunteering. But I think the select, I think the select, my, personally, I think the select board would like to support this. The town manager, at our last select board meeting, he reported to us on the town's priorities for municipal space and this was number one priority. And if that's the case, then I think it's, would be appropriate for the select board to work to put a warrant article in place to create this stabilization fund. It's been helpful to the town in the past to do it, especially if we're over the upper limit of what we, is the range for free cash.
Right.
I don't know yet, we haven't had any discussion about free cash article for affordable housing as I have no idea whether or not that's.
Right.
Going to be coming, but whether it is or isn't.
The discussion from the prior year would be that, that such an article would be promoted each year when we didn't have our taxation authority coming back from the state, so that's just.
But we may.
That's speculative, but that's how it had been discussed.
So I'm happy to hear from the rest of you what you think about this.
I think it's a good idea and, and to get it on the warrant for this next town meeting because of the, the reasons you pointed out, particularly the timing of the, the building. And I remember doing that for other projects like this.
Did we do it for Willard as well?
I think so.
I think we did.
I, I believe that we did. I, in doing the research to just pull up this grid, I did find other, other warrant articles that went farther back that were to establish stabilization funds for elementary schools. Whether it was Willard or not, I don't, I didn't really look at the details of that because I was specifically looking for the high school when I did the research for this.
I believe there was one for school information technology infrastructure.
That's true. That was a very minor initial deposit and I don't, we've put, you know, some further deposits aside for that, but yes, that was done as well.
And CMLP, although it's, you know, it's an enterprise fund, at one point when they knew the rates, we had a contract that was extraordinarily low and they knew the rates were going to bounce at the end of that, they established, you know, put some of their revenue into a stabilization fund to kind of smooth that rate increase. Similar, same concept.
It's a similar concept.
I think it's a positive direction to go in terms of, yeah.
I want, I want to commend the finance committee for bringing this to our attention and reminding us that, you know, as a town, we really need to do this. I had a couple of questions. When you're talking about the 10% approximate tax.
Yep.
Is that based on a 20-year bond or 25-year bond for the?
I think it's based on a 20-year bond, but I think Carrie could comment on that.
If you, if you remember.
Well, we did one 20, one 20.
Okay. All right. Okay. And another thing that we've been doing with free cash when it's over the 10% is putting about $1 million per year toward reducing the tax rate?
I can comment on that.
Okay.
That, that has been an ongoing practice.
Correct.
That has been going on for a very long time.
Whether or not.
Whether or not we're over or under.
Okay.
It is, we, we typically have a, you know, we, we generate free cash in any given year by, by sort of being conservative and, and very efficient in our operations and so we save maybe a half a million dollars there. And then our tax revenues, oh, we have, you know, maybe some estimates of revenue are a little underestimated and so we maybe have a half a million dollars there. So we replenish free cash with about a million, but then we apply it to tax mitigation.
Right. So that would be an ongoing process.
And this just happens on an annual basis.
Absolutely. Right. So are you, my question is, are you thinking about continuing that or are you thinking about not doing that because you want to put as much as possible into stabilization?
Well, we really haven't, we haven't gotten that deep in the weeds, but it, it's obviously a concern. I, I think we would probably want to continue, you know, not get off that merry-go-round. Once you're on that merry-go-round, it's very hard to get off that.
It would be hard to get off of it, yeah.
But it, it, we do also seem to have generated enough free cash that we're starting to, you know, on a somewhat regular basis, get over our 10%.
Right.
And, and that becomes an attractive pot that other project-oriented articles can attempt to look at. So I, I think that we should, you know, look at this as general mitigation of a tax burden that the school be imposing in a future date and, and just cuff it aside and, and keep it away from the, you know, project-oriented drawdowns.
No, I think it makes an entire sense and it goes to the Concord conservative approach. I mean, we, we all face huge capital expenses. We're looking at a number of them and this is the most, the largest staring at us. This is the finance committee making recommendations, completely appropriate. Thank you.
Just a brief comment. You know, I think there, the committee, the school building committee is very intent on advancing the timeline to the greatest extent possible, given the need. And I think everyone in this room knows it, but for those who may not be aware, a lack of MSBA funding is really just a reflection of lack of funding at the MSBA, not a lack of need on Concord.
No comment, we weren't making any comment.
Right. And so I think the, the need, I think the need is, is the community has identified the need. The fact that MSBA hasn't put money towards it, like I said, is a reflection of the other needs in the state and limited funding and formulas and all that other stuff. So there's, it, it's, it shouldn't be taken as an unwise project if MSBA is not supporting it. In fact, there's a case we made that you may save a little money because of cost escalations and things that we just heard about, about junk buildings. So anyway, as, as Carrie and I prepare the, the town manager's budget, we'll certainly take into consideration all the comments here and I know that the warrant article would be somewhat separate from that budget.
Right.
But, you know, looking at the financial projections on expenditures for FY 21, we would certainly take that in mind.
So the only, the only issue, and I, I think it's, but we probably need to get advice, as near as I know, and I don't really know, the feasibility committee will likely not be at town meeting with a warrant article asking for approval of funds for the middle school.
That's correct.
So.
I'll let him talk to that, but my expectation is.
If that's the case, contingent articles, so I just want to make sure that we talk to somebody about can you do if?
Okay.
If then kind of, or whether you would wait to have that warrant article at if we would have a special town meeting sometime in the fall or whenever the building committee is prepared, if we would have the stabilization article paired up with the.
In other words, can there be a lead stabilization fund in advance of a project?
Yeah.
Right.
And I, I just don't know.
I think you can. I think the real question is what happens if the project isn't funded?
Right.
at the debt exclusion stage?
I think that's, I think, interestingly, because we just heard from Liz and Mr. Ohanian, we'd asked that question about the Junction Village funds. And they just revert to the CPC or to the general fund in the town. So I suspect that's the same thing. We should just get an opinion so we know what we're doing.
That's very astute.
All right, well, thank you very much, Dean, and thank you, Committee, for us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight. Next item on the agenda is discussion of authorizing a town manager's own warrants if Select Board members are not available. I think that's not exactly what we're going to discuss, though, right?
The matter was kind of brought up based on current practice and what happens when the board is meeting. You get presented with things to sign this evening, warrants and things like that. And so we did some research into, you know, how are we doing it? How should we be doing it? And I think there is a change from the Municipal Modernization Act that makes it so the board can designate one person, board member, to do it, which mitigates the need to, you know, bulk things up for a meeting packet or have to hold stuff for two weeks between, you know, between meetings. So I think that's, I don't think the board has taken this step.
No, just let me interrupt you. I'm sorry, Stephen. It's just that the item on the agenda says authorizing town managers.
At the time, at the time we were looking at it, we thought that that was maybe going to be the process. But additional research yielded the Municipal Modernization Act pathway. I think the board could do it either way, but I think if the board wanted to make it.
So the motion that we have in front of us essentially authorizes the chair of the Select Board if the Select Board is not available to sign. My own, my question, and I'll ask others, is if there are warrants that need to be signed, the board is usually sent an email by Jeremy, somebody on your staff saying, there's a warrant sign, please come in. So the way this is worded is if other board members aren't available. So whatever approval posted by the board, however, set by, are approved by the board chair. So it just, I can just do it or the board chair can just do it without having to seek the signatures of the other members, is that?
And then you just have to notify the board that you did it at the next meeting. And I think it's really a modernization of what, you know, what's, I remember we talked about warrants. It's like large packets of data for, you know, payroll or vendors or things like that. It's not, you know, I think there are, we have, back in the day, there weren't as many people that reviewed the stuff. Now we have a very talented finance department that reviews these expenditures and the procurement process.
I think we should look at the Modernization Act some more and find out, because there are many things that come before the board here that.
Could be.
Which we deal with, of course, but seems rather perfunctory.
So if the chair isn't here for a week, for the off week of our board meetings, then we would just wait till the following week?
Or then, no, three board members could still sign.
Right.
So you would call in three board members that week just because?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. If it streamlines it and keeps things moving, I think that's fine.
I agree.
Yeah.
A lot of times these things are on deadline, which is the source of the issue.
Well, we often have checks and stuff to also decide where it would require signature of just one person. So any other questions about any concern? All right, Linda?
Let me just, given our conversation, just let me look at this quickly. Okay, the motion reads pursuant to MGL Chapter 41, Section 52, to approve the Chair of the Select Board to approve all bills, drafts, orders, and payrolls not otherwise presented for approval at a posted meeting to the full board, provided, however, that if such bills, drafts, orders, and payrolls are approved by the board chair, he or she shall make available to the board at the first meeting following such action a record of such actions and further to ask the board clerk to include such on the notice for the next meeting of the board.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for dealing with that. Now, Stephen? Next is the Committee Liaison Reports. Start with Susan.
Okay, on the 24th, the Trails Committee met and they were talking about developing policies and plans to address the different needs of constituents and, you know, what trails are for walking. Can you bike on them? What can you do? And so that, that sort of boiled down to a discussion that they began about code of conduct, like who yields to who kind of on, on public trails. Conservation Restrictions Stewardship Committee met later the same day. And they just reported on their monitoring and assigning conservation lands to be monitored for next month and the months after. Planning Board on September 24th. They recommended approval of the project Culinary Homes LLC, which is at 430 Old Bedford Road. It was for four housing units, two of which are in existing buildings, the house and the barn, and then two additional. Liz Russ came and talked about the housing stock inventory to the Planning Board as well in the context of the work they're doing on bylaws. Okay, 10-1, Conservation Coffee, always interesting, not an assignment to any of us, but, but we do, I enjoy attending. The couple of things they mentioned, October 19 is drop-off, swap-off. And on October 18, Concord Can is going to be doing a program. Brian Folds is going to chair it about what each of us individually can do for sustainability. Because we talk about, you know, what the town should do and the schools should do, but he's going to talk about what we can do, which I'm looking forward to hearing. October 1, that was the next meeting, Planning Board, also on October 1. They have a new, a new committee member who we're nominating tonight. It was at the meeting and will be completing their complement. They've been short a member for quite some time, so this is, this is good. The bulk of their discussion revolves around the, by, continuing the discussion about zoning amendment changes or zoning, zoning law changes, particularly the additional dwelling, accessory dwelling unit. But then they also went through all the PRD line by line, the changes, and talked about where they might want to make some recommendations there as well. And it was interesting, Conservation Coffee, someone brought up, what have we thought about low-impact development? And lo and behold, the Planning Board had a form that they got from Durham, New Hampshire, just as a starting point, that lists all kinds of methods and materials and processes for any building, you know, a home or any kind of building. So they're going to be, this is at the baby step stage, beginning to look at how we might be able to incorporate those sorts of things into our permitting process. Cemetery Committee met on October 2nd. And we're mostly talking about setting priorities for the next year. Now, this one is going to take me a minute, but I beg your indulgence. On the 4th, or 3rd, excuse me, the Middle School Building Committee met and we had talked between town and the Communications Committee on the School Committee that we wanted to disseminate the same information to everybody. So that being the case, now, this is also available online, but just to give you an update of where we are from the beginning till now. We selected Hill International as owner's project manager, who immediately started working on the designer selection process. Selection firm will work with the building committee to conduct a feasibility study and develop a schematic design. That's what this 1.5 is for. So Request for Services was drafted and issued and about 20 firms expressed interest. The applications are due on October 18th. The other thing we worked on is the project charter, which is kind of a core document that we collectively itemized key goals for the project that we can go back to and say, if we kind of get offline, say, oh, you know, we really talked about this, so let's refocus. And today, the members have focused on the guiding principles related to transparent and robust public process, engagement with the Concord residents for a state-of-the-art educational facility for students and teachers with, and future building, to construct a project and future building operations as well as create a flexible and adaptable structure that can serve present and future needs. Then, the following day, on Friday, a group of us went to visit the middle schools in Duck, Situate and Duxbury, which is for someone like me who hasn't seen a middle, I only know this middle school. But other, other folks found it very valuable. So we have some reference points to say, this is why we're doing it. Talking, we got like hour and a half tours. Why do you do it this way? And, you know, addressing sustainability, flexibility of space, security, all of those. We got input on all of those, so it was very useful. That's it.
Thank you. Linda?
Let's see. I think we already had, know that there are 13 applications for CPC with about $2.3 million request and probably less money than that. There was a HATS meeting, which is the Hanscom Area Towns Committee that met on the 26th of September, and they focused on transportation. It was very interesting. They brought, they got an update on all the in-progress projects from Mass DOT in Bedford, Concord, Lexington, and Lincoln. And there were about 10 updates that we got. Probably two or three of those are not even on the tip, but they're being talked about. One that I'll just highlight is that the bridge over Route 2 to complete the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail is a $10.7 million project. The advertisement for the project was going out on, was supposed to go out on September 14th and they're hoping to have bids in January, so that's moving. So that much to everyone's, and then the other of the 10 projects that were talked about, the other one that we spent some time on was the Route 2A resurfacing in advance of the 250th anniversary as one aspect of that. But also the other aspect of that had to do with the number of complaints and requests that are coming in to widen 2A for bikes and pedestrian and automobile traffic. And it is not possible to widen that. And so there are some real challenges there that they're going to be.
Is that 2A in Acton or is that, or that side of 2A?
That whole stretch, yeah, that whole stretch.
The stretch over by Hanscom Field, you mean? Or from where to where?
Lexington, Lincoln.
Right, the whole of 2A.
Yeah, yeah, they're looking at.
It runs through the national park.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, so they can, they can define the edges when they do the road resurfacing and some upgrade there. They can make the edges of the surfaces more clearly defined and, and, you know, even out the side pavement, but that's all they can do at this point. I think a number, all of us went to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail official opening. That was a terrific event and that was nice of you to mention that we were all there as well. But I think that the overwhelming support for that project was just evident that day. It was really wonderful.
And longstanding.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. I attended the 229 Main Street Committee that's been working for a number of years. And while they have reached various hiatus points in the amount of work and attention that they need to pay to the project, there is a step up on the role that they need to reengage with, specifically the cleanup and trying to characterize that and describe that to the public in such a way that they have confidence in the process that's going there and what residential, cleanup to residential standard really means. So in that vein, they are looking for two or three new committee members. We actually did not have a quorum at the meeting the other day. And anyone who's been doing work with environmental issues, environmental law, someone who's worked with risk management, in addition to EPA-related work, in addition to citizens who are just concerned about how this process proceeds. We hope you'll send in your green cards. It's a really important committee because as we know and the public knows, there's the Nuclear Metals StarMet Reuse Planning Committee is going to have a public forum on November 14th, excuse me, October 14th. And they are, those two committees are both very active right now, need to be active.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Did it come out, it would seem to me that the second committee that we recently formed,
the Reuse Planning Committee.
in many respects is exactly the answer to the question of, how do we reach the public in terms of getting, engaging everybody's knowledge of the level of cleanup? And, you know, to talk about reuse without having said, there's a reason we can.
You make a good point and no doubt there'll be some reference to that at that public forum. But they really need the public to focus on and be engaged in generating a list of possible uses of that because there's a timeline for that product needing to be generated.
A timeline?
In terms of the, in terms of informing the cleanup process, quite frankly, but also because of the way that the EPA consultants have set this process.
So it's part of the super fund?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And so I think they're, they hoped, whether or not they're going to be successful in doing this, they're hoping to have an article in the journal and find other ways to get to committees and so forth about.
Why don't you invite them to come talk to us?
Yeah, 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 I think that's.
I know they've been active coming to a number of the meetings I've been to.
Trying to get to, trying to get to other committees.
So invite them, invite them to come in and find out when they can come do that.
Okay, we'll do that. CHA is further down the road with finding out what the, from HUD, what the process is for repositioning their products of federal properties. And in fact, at this last meeting, they actually voted to go ahead with a 503(c) application to, as part of that process, receiving the properties and so forth. There are some potential tax consequences for that and so they're going to be meeting with the Board of Assessors, which I wanted to note. The CHA is one of the only two entities that are actually paying monetary payments to, in pilot. Then I happened to attend the West Concord Advisory Committee meeting and what I'll highlight there is that they are sending some suggestions to the Planning Board for possible rezoning amendments, particularly as it relates to the Light Industrial District in West Concord, which includes the Nishoba Bakery area and then going up Combe North from there. So that was interesting to hear. This evening, just for a short time before coming here, I met with the Public Celebrations and Ceremonies Committee. They want to remind everyone that November 11th is the Veterans Day Ceremony. They also are looking for one or two new members, possibly two new members. And I can, I think we can all comment on, they do a terrific job. They're highly organized and so joining that committee is actually a pleasure for the people who actually join that committee, so we, we need members there.
Wow, okay.
I just wanted to add one thing about my planning report that I.
Can I just, I just wanted to add one thing about my planning report that I left out, and that is that the planning board is looking to engage with DPW Finance and Schools around these zoning changes they're proposing to try to figure out the impact on the schools, you know, the sewer system, all of where the, where the impacts will be town-wide. So they want to, that's part of their process of putting together these recommendations.
That's great, because that's exactly in the spirit of our new long-range plan. I'm going to be short and sweet. I, the meetings I've attended included many of the ones we've already discussed here tonight, as well as a, a town hall meeting that our Congresswoman, Lori Trahan, had at, at CCHS last Thursday, to discuss, the specific topic was the campaign to end Citizens United and her roles in Congress on that. But it was just a very good, very free-part participation with the Congresswoman. She's clearly trying to make herself very available to the district, and, and it was moderated and equally participated in by our rep, Tammy, whose name immediately just dropped out of my head, even though I could see her. And once again, it's just, we have a real star in Tammy. I hope that we can support her with ideas, because she clearly is, she's just beginning to feel her, her plan, or her, her approach. I'm thinking about transportation in particular.
I forgot to mention she was on the panel.
Exactly, exactly. And then the other one of my committees worth noting here was the Historic District Commission, which was visited, visited by the Concord Museum, and that turned into a very lengthy discussion. It was on the agenda for approval or discussion of lighting with the new sign, and it resulted in the museum and, and the HGC determining that the long list of other issues that have not yet been resolved to their satisfaction needed to be thought through. So that's not, that's not finished. That, I'm going to pass it over.
Okay.
Okay, so, on October 24th, I went to a League of Women Voters Forum with Kari Tari, our town clerk, I think a number of people were there, talking about the census. And then that evening, I went to the Commission of Disabilities meeting, and one thing I want to report about that is they're not totally satisfied with the parking plan for the new library expansion, and they're going to be probably sending a letter to the zoning board under the 20-day appeals, requesting more handicap parking and safety planning. And I also, a number of us attended the welcoming meetings for our new town managers, those were fun. And on October 1st, I went to the West Concord Junction Cultural District, which did a really good debrief on the Porch Fest. Turns out, over 1,000 people attended. They printed 400 maps. They had to keep printing them again all day long. It kept running out. So they have a number of do's and don'ts for next year. They're definitely already planning it for next year. Huge success. And on the 2nd, I went to the Concord Local Cultural Council, and they are looking for more applicants. They have money to give away, and the deadline is October 15th, so you might want to check that out on their website, the Local Cultural Council. And then on the 4th, we've talked about the transportation forum. That was a real big success for the week.
As mentioned, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail was a great success. I wish I would have had the presence of mind to mention it when Marshall Rashmood was here to thank her and her staff for all she did to make that a reality for the town. I was invited and attended a breakfast at Emerson Hospital, just a number of folks in the community to hear about issues and what Emerson Hospital is. Very interesting, is one of our major businesses in town. It was quite informative. I met with the Tax Fairness Committee, that's the committee that proposed and had accepted the senior means-tested tax relief plan. They finalized, as I've submitted on their behalf to Senator Barrett, the revised law that will take to town, town meeting, that makes a couple of corrections and eliminates the sunset clause. I attended, on our behalf, the Minuteman Vocational Tech ribbon-cutting ceremony, I think it was last Friday. That was quite an event. If you have another chance to go out and just take a look at the school, they're going to be announcing tours, but I think not until next month after things settle down a little bit. But if you're out in that way, just kind of drive in and take a peek, it's a really, very attractive building, and the students seemed all eager-
I can't wait to see it, since our last visit was in scaffolding.
All the scaffolding's down, landscaping, and it's, it's quite attractive. I attended Finance Committee meeting. The two major items that they talked about were five-year tax projections to do, and talking about sustainability, which we call, they've adopted sort of sustainability principle to guide them in to the guideline process. And Dean is, is meeting this Thursday, I'm just not sure, pretty sure, and it's a guideline, guideline meeting this Thursday. I also attended the Mass Municipal Association. I'm a member of the Fiscal Policy Committee, and we met and had a significant presentation about the new school funding legislation pending. Essentially, I, I think it won't have much of an impact on us. I wrote to Superintendent Hunter after the briefing, and she responded that way, that it probably wouldn't have much of an impact. There may be some data collection issues in their new law, but, but quite comprehensive. I attended School Committee meeting. The things I would report there is I had a very long discussion about trips that they approved, what the criteria should be, how they should do it, and that kind of stuff, very long. I suspect that will be a continuing discussion. There was also a recognition of the high school band, which was quite nice, and the superintendent presented her goals, which, if you're interested, they're just called School Committee, and they're online. We just mentioned that the municipal life plant, this Thursday, at 7:00 here in the townhouse, is having an update on their strategic plan. So those of you that are interested, I think it'd be very sort of interesting.
AM or PM?
Sub PM, I think, yeah, sub PM.
Does anyone happen to know if that's going to be filmed?
I don't have any idea. It certainly should be-
Maybe not broadcast.
Recorded.
Yes.
Thursday, Thursday.
As we just noted, the Finance Committee's meeting at the same time, so we're trying to figure out-
They're going to be here, Finance Committee, I think.
We're trying to figure out resources.
Oh, yeah. All right.
Just one other thing before we close off of liaisons. I did want to note that the Cooler Concord Electric Car, Drive Electric?
Oh, yeah.
Program is, is scheduled for November 2nd, from 11:00 to 3:00 at Concord-Carroll High School, just the purpose of which is, anybody who's looking at calendars and looking in advance, that's always a great event, so.
All right, thank you. No miscellaneous correspondence, or ready for nominations?
Mr. Town Manager nominations with Select Board approval. Tori Lambert of 149 College Road to the Board of Assessors for a term to expire May 31, 2022. Bill Camesa of 28 Davis Court to the Trails Committee.
All right.
Chairman?
Yes.
Just made a comment on the Assessor, so it's clear for everybody. We had a resignation from the Board of Assessors, and so this appointment is to fill that unexpired term.
Okay. And Mr. Lambert has-
Has previously served.
Has done this before, so he's a good fill-in with the previous experience, so he can get up to speed as they head into their busy period. Yeah, thank you. Committee nominations.
Haley Orbidol of 76 Upland Road to the Planning Board for a term to expire May 31, 2024. Todd Benjamin of 333 Sudbury Road to the Capital Planning Task Force for a term to expire April 7, 2020. Virginia Denny McIntyre of 26 Simon Willard Road to the Tax Relief Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2022.
And committee appointments.
Committee appointments, Jane Obegay, Executive Director of Chamber of Commerce, per the, per their committee charge, and Beth Williams, Tourism and Visitor Services Manager, per the committee charge, to the Economic Vitality Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2022. Holly Darzon of 155 Heath Bridge Road to the Housing Trust Study Committee to, for a term to expire March 30, 23, 2020. Carrie La, Carrie, it says Carrie LaFleur, Finance Director, per committee charge, and Stephen Crane, Town Manager, per committee charge, to the Capital Planning Task Force for a term to expire April 7, 2020.
Question about that?
Let's go to second first.
Second.
All right, yes.
So, that committee is supposed to have a six-month charge, and so that would be six months-
Meaning the Capital Planning Task Force?
Right, right, the Capital Planning Task Force. So that would be six months from today, but we don't have the whole committee appointed yet. They won't, they won't be able to have their first meeting today, right? I'm just wondering if, want to change it to like April 30th or something, just to make sure we have enough time to appoint everybody, or-
You mean for the term, the term expiration dates?
Yeah, the term is going to expire, I mean, probably not going to meet till November at this point, right?
Should be six months on the first meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what I'm thinking.
Whatever your pleasure it.
Can always be amended.
I think, I think we should get them appointed like this, and then we can do what we did for-
Study Committee.
The Study Committee.
Exactly.
We came back, if we needed to, and amended their term.
Okay, great.
So, let's, but thanks for catching that for us. So we do have a second. Any more questions? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is determine Select Board nominee to the Capital Planning Task Force. Any volunteers, Gary?
I'm happy to do it. If nobody, if, if someone else wants to do it, that's also fine with me.
Well, I think this was, this originated, at least as I recall, when you were on the Finance Committee, and you written the charge for it and-
You've shepherded it through, right.
I think that would be a good idea.
I second that.
Then let's have a nomination.
Your address, address real quick.
Address.
89 Heath Bridge Road. Okay, thank you. The Select Board nominates Terry Ackerman of 89 Heath Bridge Road to the Capital Planning Task Force for a term to expire April 7, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for volunteering.
[laughing]
Public comments?
Yes. Evening. My name is Brooks Reed, and I live at 366 Estbrook Road, and I'm defendant in the Estbrook lawsuit. Town Council is provably lying to and misleading the Select Board about the events leading to the filing of the Estbrook lawsuit. Town Council has been promoting a false narrative about the events leading up to the filing of the lawsuit. Among other things, this false narrative has resulted in large and ongoing billing of Concord taxpayers for legal services which were never required nor warranted by the facts. The false narrative was also promoted by former town moderator Eric Van Loon at 2018 Special Town Meeting. For the benefit of Mr. Crane, video of Mr. Van Loon's statement can be viewed using a link which I provided in this document, which I'll give to you when I'm done. The main point of Mr. Van Loon's statement at Special Town Meeting was that the town was, quote, "forced to file suit" in the Estbrook lawsuit. Mr. Van Loon claimed a quote from a letter sent to the town to support his claim that the town was forced to file suit. I will call this letter the Mintz Letter, as it originated from the Mintz Levin Law Firm. I used a public records request to obtain a copy of the Mintz Letter. I will be presenting to you a copy of my public records request and the Mintz Letter I received and returned from the town clerk. I'm requesting that these documents be added to the supporting materials for this meeting and be made available for unrestricted public view. If you examine the Mintz Letter and compare it with the statements Mr. Van Loon made at 2018 Special Town Meeting, you'll see that Mr. Van Loon clearly misrepresented the Mintz Letter. I have included in the document package I will be submitting to you a document which itemizes the ways in which Mr. Van Loon misrepresented the Mintz Letter to both Concord taxpayers and to you, the Select Board. If you look at the Mintz Letter, the first thing you'll notice is that across the top, it is marked in boldface type with a statement, "Confidential, for settlement purposes only." The Mintz Letter was clearly not intended to be used to put forth a public narrative, but was in fact a confidential council-to-council communication which Town Council has promoted as just cause for billing Concord taxpayers more than $686,000 as of the end of July. I hope that the current Select Board will hold Town Council accountable for the false narrative it is using to justify continued billing of Concord taxpayers for legal services which could have been entirely avoided had Town Council accurately communicated the content of the Mintz Letter to the Select Board. This false narrative, which has not been countermanded by Town officials, has caused the defendants in the Estbrook lawsuit irreparable harm, damage to our reputations, harm to our physical well-being, harm to our property, harm to our health, damage to our financial well-being, and emotional harm. As defendants and as taxpayers, we find this widely distributed and publicly expressed false narrative grossly offensive, and note that it has served only to deepen our resolve for transparency and solidified our desire for judicial review of the lawsuit. Thank you very much. I'm going to hand out copies. I have copies for everyone here.
If you've just given them to Jeremy, he can give them to us. Are there any other public comments?
That's all I have to say. I have copies-
Any other public comments? All right. Next item on our agenda was my list.
Executive session.
Yeah, the next item on our agenda is I called to open an executive session for the purpose of discussing ongoing litigation regarding Estbrook Road, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. So, I am now going to entertain a motion, and you will note in the motion that at the end of our executive session, it notes that we will return to open session, but just for those that are here, although no longer anybody here, we don't tend to conduct any business after returning to open session, but we'll simply adjourn.
Okay.
Lynda?
Move to open to executive session for the purposes of discussing Estbrook Road litigation and to not reconvene an open session. The executive session is needed to protect strategy discussions affecting litigation on the stated matter.
And you'll call the roll, please.
Yes.
Second.
Thank you.
Susan Bates.
Aye.
Myself, Lynda Escobedo. Mike Lawson.
Aye.
Dana Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Terry Ackerman.
Aye.
All right, thank you.